It's about eight minutes after seven o'clock. We will reconvene in open session, this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. I want to extend a warm welcome to everybody who has joined us here this evening, those who will be recognized, and those of you who are here to join us in celebrating some of the accomplishments of our students. I say it every month, but I cannot tell you how much we appreciate your support of and your continued interest in the Waco Public Schools. So, thank you for joining us here this evening. We also want to thank or welcome those at home who are part of our vast North American viewing audience, watching on WISD-TV, Channel 17, where we undoubtedly have the best video production staff of any public school district in the state. And, as I remind you each month, I want to say the board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. As management, it's the sole responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you would either silence it or turn it off at this time, we would appreciate it. Once again, welcome, and thank you for joining us here this evening. And with that, we will move on to Item Six, Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. Kane.
I'm sorry, it's not on here.
She has reminded me. Why don't you please join the board as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, meditation, contemplation, or reflection? Thank you. And now we'll move on to Item Six, Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from Indian Spring Middle School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please welcome sixth graders Jenny Ann Mercer and Jalen Marquise Norwood Sanders.
(applause)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Board members, please join me in front of the dais for tonight's special recognition. Thank you, students. Well, we will begin the special recognition portion of this, our last meeting until next year, by introducing our pledge of allegiance leaders from Indian Spring Middle School. Jenny Ann Mercer is described by her teachers as consistently helpful, positive, and attentive. Her favorite subjects are science and English. She has thrived in service learning and improves the group dynamics wherever she is placed. Jenny excels at band, loves to sing, loves to read novels and write in her journal, and she writes exciting stories. We want to recognize Jenny's parents, Amanda and Christopher Morase. We're glad to have her father, Chris, here tonight. Thank you for sharing your talented daughter with us.[236.62][236.62](applause) Jalen Marquise Norwood Sanders is another talented Indian Spring sixth grader who likes school so much, he cannot pick a favorite subject because he loves them all.[252.31][252.31](laughter) Always eager to learn, Jalen loves to make the most of his time in class. Described by his teachers as funny, quick-witted, and playful, his cheerful spirit always proves the mood of those around him. Jalen excels in band and participates in history and science fair at school. Jalen's Aunt Kimberly Thomas and Aunt Marshall Wiley are with him tonight because his father, Courtney Sanders, works out of town, and his mother, Kamara Norwood, just arrived from West Avenue where she was attending the younger sisters' music program. We want to recognize Jalen's family for investing in his education.[290.27][290.27](applause) We also want to say thank you to our adopted school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble Book Sellers, for donating the books that our pledge leaders are receiving tonight.[305.02][305.02](applause) Board members, while this concludes our special recognition, we do have one more item on this portion of the agenda. As you know, Brazos High Credit Recovery is an alternative learning environment designed to provide a flexible, self-paced curriculum for students. Using a computer-based instructional program, students are able to follow a graduation plan and recover credits in all subject areas. Tonight, we are presenting ten candidates who are from Brazos High School Credit Recovery so that you may certify their requirements for graduation. So, our graduation gift to them will be a high school diploma.[347.12][347.12](applause) Actually, I probably should have said they're gifted themselves, because that truly is what it is. Well, President Atkins and Principal Daphne Latchinson, please join me at the podium.
I believe this is your first graduation, right? All right.
(inaudible).
Yeah. Oh, no, you're here this summer.
Will the following candidates please come to the front? Christian Ivan Camacho. Anthony Emilio Contreras. Kalia K. Gamble.[398.00][398.00](applause) La Shamika Shontae Jones.[405.87][405.87](applause) Monica DeShawn Christine Kelly.[422.81][422.81](applause) Evelyn Torres Padron.[430.62][430.62](applause) La Shavante Koenick Quentin.[438.87][438.87](applause) Dr. Kane, as principal of Brazos High School, I certify that these students have met the state and local requirements for graduation and are eligible to receive a diploma or have met the attendance requirement under Senate Bill 673 and are eligible to receive a certificate of attendance.
President Atkins? As superintendent of the Waco Independent School District, and based on the recommendation of Principal Latchinson, I certify that these students have met the requirements set by the state of Texas and the Texas Education Agency and are eligible to receive their high school diploma or certificate of attendance.
Dr. Kane, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the community that we represent, I will accept the administration's recommendation, find that these students have all met the requirements for a diploma or certificate of attendance, and declare that these students are all now graduates of the Waco Independent School District.[532.79][532.79](applause)
We have Anthony Emilio Contreras.[544.99][544.99](applause) Kalia K. Gamble.[553.54][553.54](applause) La Shamika Shontae Jones.[561.16][561.16](applause) Kalia Mikel Kelly.[567.66][567.66](applause) Monica DeShawn Christine Kelly.[575.73][575.73](applause) Evelyn Torres Padron.[584.82][584.82](applause) La Shavante Koenick Quentin.[593.99][593.99](applause) Tanaya Danielle Sattler.[601.91][601.91](applause)
All right. Congratulations again to all our graduates. That was a nice surprise, a nice way to end up the calendar year. As the graduates and their families exit.[686.88][686.88](laughter) And we'll let those folks continue on their way, because I know they want to celebrate tonight. They have worked hard and shown a great deal of persistence.[702.04][702.04](laughter) All right. We will move on to Item Eight, which is our audience for guests. This is the portion of the meeting where we receive input from patrons and the general public. Each person who addresses the board will have three minutes to speak on his or her issue. Because of posting requirements under the Open Meetings Act, the board will not be allowed to answer questions or dialogue on matters other than those posted on the agenda for action later tonight. Patrons addressing the board will be notified by Mr. Dupuy when their three minutes have expired. Just one, is that correct? Dr. Balthazar Acevedo.
Sir, you can really clear out a house, see?[750.32][750.32](laughter)
You're going to affect them people.[754.12][754.12](laughter)
Dr. Acevedo, if you want to, they'll be out in just a minute when we close the doors. There's a lot of celebrating going on in the hallway.
A lot of happy people.
One down.
Look at that little girl, isn't she cute?
All right. And your time has not started yet, so.
I've not started the clock yet.
Good to go. There you go.
Ready?
We're ready. Thanks, sir.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Kane, fellow taxpayers, the few that remain.[800.00][800.00](laughter) I am Balthazar Acevedo Iarispad Jr. I am no longer a PhD. I rescinded my doctorate from University of Texas yesterday, so you may refer to me as Senor Balthazar Acevedo Iarispad. I'm not here to offer any comments as a representative of any community or group. I speak for my family and myself. This board will soon be searching for a replacement for Dr. Kane, and I thank her for her service.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone who has occupied that job knows it is hard. I am not overly concerned about who will be assuming the role of the next superintendency. Rather, my concern is with the process that is put in place to ensure input from the community, to guide the process so that we find the best person for this most challenging job. A thorough understanding of diversity in an urban community would be a plus. As you are aware, Waco is an ethnic community, and nowhere is this more represented than in your student enrollment. As a matter of fact, the student enrollment of Waco, it juxtaposed against the student enrollment or the population of the state of Texas, it's almost on one-to-one scale. You have 54% Mexican-American, increasing annually by 3%, 22% African-American, which is flatlining, and 24% white, that is decreasing annually at a rate of 2% to 4%. Now, what is happening here, though, is that there are some things happening in Austin and in the District of Columbia that tells me there's a very bad moon rising. What does that mean? What do I mean by that? I am meaning that the appointment of a Secretary of Education, who does not even have a background in education, but has millions, billions of dollars, will be proposing that we do away with public education and have charter schools all over the place. Didn't work in Detroit, literally destroyed the city of Detroit, which was already in the process of falling apart. The other thing that is happening is I've been attending meetings in Austin of the Legislative Budget Board. There is a plan in the legislature to downscale funding for education in Texas by $850 million to $1.2 billion. And the question I have for you, are you ready to face what is coming? This board is the most crucial element in this community. I don't see the municipality or the commissioners of the courts of this county as the most important. I don't. As a matter of fact, some of those people are totally clueless. I see you being the ones that hold steadfast of the storm that's coming before us. My expectation is that you rise to the occasion, provide me an excellent return for my investment in various properties that I pay a lot of taxes for, too much. And so, I expect the highest level of performance of whomever you bring in, whether it's Mexican-American, African-American, white, women, I don't care. Just bring us the best person, hold them accountable. I will hold you accountable. I cannot hold that person accountable, but I vote, and I will do so, and continue to pay my taxes. I'm here to be of service. I plan to be here as often as I can. I am selling most of my properties in New Mexico so that I can spend more time here. And if I ever find a mountain range here, I'm going to be very happy to stay here.[1025.43][1025.43](laughter) Thank you for your courtesy, and I wish all of you a happy holiday season.
Dr. Acevedo, before you walk away, I want on a personal level, as you know, I ran into you a few days ago over at the Starbucks, and a couple of Waco High students were there, including my own son, and you took the time to meet with them, and then followed up through email to give them a tool for doing sort of planning, future planning, and I just want to thank you for doing that. You didn't, there's nothing you had to do, you didn't have to take the time to visit with those young people, and you did it, and you were genuine, and I know they got a lot out of it, so thank you for taking that time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you, sir.
On the consent agenda, I know I've been asked to pull...
Gee.
Is there anything we're pulling from the consent agenda? Dr. Kane?
Pardon me? I want Dr. to pull G.
All right. Is there anything else we're pulling other than Item G? All right. Then, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Item G.
Where are you? I like I also, I'm sorry.
Okay. Folks, we're going to pull G and I, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of those two items.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. Is there a second?
I don't know who seconded that.
Angela. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Dr. Kane, we're not going to do anything tonight on Item G, is that correct?
This is such a great item, and we've got so many plans for it, and we've got so many supporting this. Mr. Geetson put in, had another showing yesterday, caused all new ripples of excitement with the different options, so I'd like to ask for more time so we can make certain that this is just exactly what we all need. So, if you'd give us another month, we'd appreciate it.
We'll take it up in January. Item I, Temporary Hourly Rate for After-School Workers, the tips grant. Mr. Perez had a question.
I'm good. I shouldn't have pulled it. I understand it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so.
No. You have pulled it.
We will make her way down here.[1158.15][1158.15](laughter)
You have to ask a question now.
That's right.[1161.15][1161.15](laughter)
How many employees are we talking about?
I believe there's two employees that would be affected.
Okay, I thought that it was numerous employees, so.
Just Indian Spring Middle.
Ask the question.
That was good.[1177.97][1177.97](laughter) All right. I'll entertain a motion to adopt Item Nine, aye.
I move that we adopt the administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Cordewag. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Item Ten, Discussion on Possible Action, Gifts and Grants. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. This is always one of our most favorite items. We have such a generous community that we're just very fortunate. There were no gifts valued at $2,000 or greater reported for December 2016, but there was an increase of $10,744 in total cash items and services donated to Waco ISD, and that was recorded for the December 2016 report. The Meadows Foundation Charitable Schools Program awarded seven grants to teachers for students to participate in projects on their respective campuses or within the community. Each award is $500, totaling $3,500 for the school district. The campus grantees are Cesar Chavez Middle School, GW Carver Middle School, Indian Spring Middle School, Lake Air Montessori Magnet, Tennyson Middle School, University High School, and Waco High School. So, this is an increase of grant awards for $3,500, and I am recommending acceptance of the gifts and grants.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the Meadows Foundation grant.
Move.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
All those opposed? All right. Item Eleven, Reports and Discussion. Item A, School Board Member Continuing Education Requirements. The State Board of Education rules requires that the president of the board publicly announce which board members have met, exceeded, or are deficient in meeting their continuing education requirements. Annually, at the last regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, held during a calendar year, the current president of each local Board of Trustees shall announce the name of each board member who has completed the required continuing education, who has exceeded the required hours of continuing education, and who is deficient in the required continuing education as of the date of that meeting. It is a basic obligation, an expectation of a sitting board member to complete the required board training each year. This information will be reflected in the board minutes as Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three training, and will be made available to the public. In accordance with the State Board of Education rules, each new board member will receive Tier One training, which includes a local district orientation and a basic orientation regarding the Texas Education Code and relevant legal obligations. All sitting board members will receive updates regarding the Texas Education Code after each session of the Texas Legislature, including each regular session and called session relating to education. Mr. President, I appreciate that.[1364.15][1364.15](laughter) Do we get another hour credit for that?[1366.83][1366.83](laughter)
That's good.
One.[1371.71][1371.71](laughter) One, I don't need any heckling from the peanut gallery.
You put Mr. Dupuy to sleep over here.
Number two.
Mr. Dupuy, but wake up, Mr. Dupuy.
We're not even halfway through my speech yet, so bear with me.
And you know Bruce Geetson's following you, so he's going to have to outdo you.
I was just simply turning the page. We will continue.[1391.01][1391.01](laughter) Anyone else want to rudely interrupt this important report?
I wouldn't interrupt.
No, Alan was. All right.
You're snoring, you're snoring interrupted.
I will now continue.
Something needs to start, please.[1405.15][1405.15](laughter)
Dr. Kane's proposing that I start all over, just to.
So you can feel the real flow.[1410.15][1410.15](laughter)
Tier One, Orientations. I am happy to report that there are no first-year board members requiring Tier One credits this year. Texas Education Code Orientation. There are no first-year board members requiring this orientation in no legislative session.
Can we get Mr. Acevedo back?[1427.15][1427.15](laughter)
Texas Education Code Update Training. There are no training hours to report due, again, to no regular session being held in even numbered years. Tier Two, Teamwork.[1439.71][1439.71](laughter) Something perhaps we should repeat and retake. The Board of Trustees and Superintendent Bonnie Kane have exceeded the requirements of Tier Two with a total of 20.5 hours. Seventeen and a half hours were earned in the months of November and December alone.
Yay! Good luck.[1462.53][1462.53](applause)
And I question the math on this next part, but we'll accept it. Tier Three, Discretionary Continuing Education. Pat Atkins and Kerry Dupuy have completed the required number of Tier Three continuing education hours for the year. Congratulations.
What about that, Matthew?
Well, the next part. Board members Stephanie Cordewag, Norman Manning, Larry Perez, Alan Sykes, and Angela Tekel have exceeded the required number of Tier Three continuing education hours for the year.
Yay![1501.65][1501.65](laughter) Speech.
I think I spent just as much time in training as some of you at the Tazby Convention, but that's okay. The results speak for themselves. No audit required on those numbers.
Who's number one? I want to know who the number one is.
Andrew.
That is my, I humbly submit that report, and I'll conclude the report on continuing education requirements under the rules of the State Board of Education. Dr. Kane? Monthly, quarterly financial reports that were in the packet, did you have anything to highlight other than what's in there?
Top that, Ms. Davis. Okay. She's up to the challenge, all right. You're going to be between Geetson's voice and Atkins'.
We didn't set the bar very high.
I cannot compete with that. I did want to point out, though, that as of the second six weeks, our ADA appears to be up about 138 stu-, well, our enrollment's up about 138 students, so that would generate almost $1 million in additional revenue for the year. Now, $330,000 of that, because the CATE numbers are up, will have to, I'll bring an amendment probably in January to put that money into CATE, but that is good news for a change.
Excuse me, how much was that, Ms. Davis?
Almost $1 million. It's $956,000.
And an increase in enrollment of 138 students.
Now, that's, I mean, if it holds, we, again, we will be watching that every six weeks, end of, every six weeks, and keep projecting numbers, but that's what it looks like right now.
Very good. Good report. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any other questions on the financial reports? Mr. Geetson, drum roll, please.
(groan)
Ladies and gentlemen.[1610.33][1610.33](laughter) It is my honor to introduce, for this evening's announcements, the one and only Mr. Bruce Geetson.
I will try not to go as long as Pat Atkins.[1620.01][1620.01](laughter) Trustees and audience at home, happy holidays to you. Tomorrow's the final day of classes before the Christmas break. Students will have an early release day. Staff will work a full day. Offices will reopen January 2nd. Classes resume on January 3rd. So, it's the last meeting of the year. The administration building will be closed tomorrow from 11:30 to 1:30 for our annual holiday party for employees downtown. We have some surprises in store for employees at that event, and it's always a fun time. So, if you have business to do at the downtown building, if you can kind of do it before 11:30 or after 1:30, that would be great. The district has a holiday video page online at wacoisd.org that's a collection of 11 videos of different campus groups performing this holiday season. It is a treat to watch if you get the chance to check that out. That's on wacoisd.org. Tomorrow morning from 8:30 to 9:30, Lake Air Middle School Choir hosting its annual sing-along for students. It's been a busy week, busy two weeks on campuses for Christmas events. Moving way forward, the HR Department's job fair information now online, and that doesn't happen until March 18th, but just in case during the holiday break, people at home are planning for the new year, they'd like to join our terrific team here at Waco ISD, there's a pre-registration form for that job fair on the district website. Our Waco ISD Cares Giving Campaign registration wrapped up this week with employees going online to choose up to three community nonprofit groups to donate to next year, and we'll have final numbers on that at our next board meeting. Here's some good news from Johnny Tousam and the athletic department about how Texas feels about our football stadium. Again, if you take out Cowboys Stadium, who's guaranteed 10 finals games, by the UAL NRG Stadium in Houston, and the Cowboys' new facility in Frisco, Waco ISD's athletic complex, tied with Abilene ISD's Shotwell Stadium, for hosting the most high school football games in the state. So, kudos to Coach Tousa and his department over there, his staff, and also the district. Now, both Shotwell and Waco ISD venues had nine postseason games for the football season. And if you also add in five games that Baylor's McLean Stadium had, two postseason games at Midway's Panther Stadium, and one at La Vegas Pirate Stadium, the city of Waco, Waco area, hosted 17 postseason contests. It's the most in the state, and that is a touchdown for our local economy. That is really good. And finally, Waco ISD-TV and our fine arts department have a holiday special on tap for us. For the first time ever, Jesse Patao and Larry Carpenter have put together a Hillcrest PDS Showtime Marathon for New Year's weekend. You'll see 21 of that school's acclaimed theater troops, learning through the arts Showtime productions, going all the way back to the very first show in 1996. Starts December 30th, goes through- Starts December 30th, goes through January 1st, just in ca-, in case you need a break from watching football on TV. Little Birdie also told me there are some trustees' family stars in that series of shows, right, Ms. Teckel?[1724.01][1724.01](laughter) All the faculty and staff here at Waco ISD wish all of you and all the people at home a Merry Christmas, a safe holiday break, and a great start to the new year.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, as always.
It would be, Jesse does this on Wayback Wednesday, and unfortunately, we don't have the capability to go back and put people's names, you know, who they are now, so everybody would know, well, that's the mayor, that's, uh, but Jesse does a great job with it. That'll be a good program.
Before we adjourn, I was reflecting on the, uh, the continuing education report. I don't think folks approach that with the proper level of solemnity, so I would propose we do that again next month and every month thereafter until folks are ready to be appropriately solemn and formal.
I have an appreciation.
All right. Hearing no objection, I'll wish everyone a Merry, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
I have an announcement.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to wish you a happy birthday.
Well, I will ask, wish you a happy birthday as well, and we'll go back and eat some cake.
Yeah, they both have cake. They'll eat cake.
Hearing no objection, we'll stand adjourned.